Okay, good evening again and welcome to the Town of Exeter Select Board September 6, 2022 Regular Meeting. The Board, I call it meeting to order at 6:50, at which time we proceeded downstairs for a board interview. We've now returned, so I would like to introduce the Select Board at this time. To my right, Select Woman Lovey Rountreeolof, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Vice Chair, Select Woman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our Clerk, the Select Woman Julie Gilman.
Hello.
Good evening.
Select Woman Nancy Belanger, to the left, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine.
Thank you. Good evening.
Our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel, good evening. And I'm Nico Papakostandis. I hope everybody had a nice, long weekend, and those that have children going back to school had a good experience and a good first week as we head right into the fall. So, first order of business is a bid opening for the ambulance fire, the ambulance for the fire and EMS department. Mr. Dean?
Yes, this bid came in on time and was sort of set aside because of a holiday and people being off, so the bid is legitimate. And we just are asking for the bid to be opened and referred over to the Fire Department for their review.
Okay. Do I have that to open?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
It'll just make it slightly help.
Thanks.
Okay, Madam Clerk, the bid is from Bulldog Fire and Emergency Apparatus from Whittville, Massachusetts. And the bid is for one, I don't know if I'm going to pronounce this correctly, Osage, O-S-A-G-E, type three ambulance on a 2025 Ford E480 Chassis, C-H-A-S-S-I-S, for the sum of $336,033. That's 336033.
Okay.
Okay. And if there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to forward the bid to the Fire Chief and the Fire Department for review.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Next up is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to come up and comment to the Select Board. We do ask if your comments are relevant to anything on the agenda. You wait till that agenda comes up. And we don't have any public this evening, so close that. There are no proclamations or recognitions. The minutes for August 22, 2022 are not yet available, so we will review those at our next meeting on September 19. Appointments, we just interviewed Stacy Rogers for the open seat on the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Mr. Dean, do you have the term on that?
2023.
And at this time, if there are no comments or questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion to appoint Stacy Rogers to the Sustainability Advisory Committee to a term to expire on April 2023.
Zomo, second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Stacy. And we will jump right into our discussion items. First, we have Supervisor of the Checklist, Vicky Navoycheck. Good evening, Vicky.
Hi.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me back. For the Town of Exeter, I am Vicky Navoycheck. I am your Senior Supervisor of the Checklist. I've been serving for, feels like forever, but like 12 years now. But would like just to let everybody know, school's on, election season is open, and we have our first election for the primary happening on Tuesday, September 13, at the Talbot Gym. Station opens at 7:00 a.m., and we run until 8:00 p.m., so please come out and vote. And I'm here to talk about voter registration. If you are not yet registered to vote in the Town of Exeter, you are more than welcome to still register to vote. However, we will ask you to do that at the polling station on Election Day. This evening is our last evening to take in new voter registrations and approve them, so we can then print off our ballot books and move forward with our election. So, what is necessary for you to come and register is a form of identification, a photo ID, a proof of residency. So that would be your domicile address, so where your house is, not necessarily where your mail goes to, so we'll need a proof of that. You can use either a bank statement, car registration, utility bill, et cetera. We do ask for your citizenship. And for citizenship, that is three documents only. And I know a lot of people think that the real ID does that. However, it does not. We give real IDs to green cardholders. And as we all know, they are not citizens. However, we need either a birth certificate, a naturalization papers, thank you, or your U.S. United States passport. If you don't have those documentation, that's totally fine. We have legal documents that you can sign and swear that you attest that you're a U.S. citizen. And then finally, your age. So your photo ID, typically your New Hampshire driver's license will have most of those things except for your citizenship. So I welcome everybody who is eligible to vote on Election Day. That would be you turn 18 that morning. We would love for you to come in and exercise your right to vote. And I just want to thank the Select Board for being here and allowing me to speak. So thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Any questions from the Select Board?
No, I just want to thank you for your service. It's been, I've seen your face there many years.
You're welcome. And I also want to put out a big plug, as I always do, to our election officials that are working tirelessly, as well as all of our volunteers. We can't do these elections without all of you, so thank you. And all of our Select Board, who are there in service all day at the elections as well. So we'll see you there on Tuesday.
Well, we look forward to seeing you. And thank you to all of the Supervisors of the Checklist. It's a long day, but it's important work, and it's, you know, very much appreciated for the passion that you have and how helpful you are in assisting folks to register to vote. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I was just thanking you.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time. Have a great night.
You too.
Mr. Dean, next up, the Town Clerk?
Yeah, so we were going to pass over this item only because from LHS Associates, we've received a price quote as far as the new polling pads go, but we don't have a contract. And we've been asking them for a contract, but we don't have it quite yet. So we will bring this back as soon as we get a draft.
Okay, fantastic. So then moving along to our next agenda item, Chief Pooleen is here to talk about the replacement for tasers and possible usage of funding. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. How are you all? So, we've been asked to look at some items that we could possibly fund through some ARPA. And the two major items we've come up with were mobile communications and tasers. But mobile communications, we decided to attempt a congressional-directed spending request this year for those. So for ARPA, we're looking at replacing our tasers, 30 tasers in total. Tasers came to the Exeter Police Department in 2006. I was the first taser instructor then. In 2017, we replaced all our tasers with the newest version due to some perceived health issues with the original taser. Five years is the standard useful life recommendation for the taser. It's not an expiration date, but what that means is, you know, it's basically a computer and there's firmware inside it that may or may not be reliable when you need to use it. It also means that taser won't cover us with their $10 million liability insurance should something go wrong. God forbid someone dies from a taser shock or anything like that. So since 2017, there have been two models released, and we were looking with the ARPA funds to get the latest model. And the benefits with that over what we currently have, other than reliability, is that it has an updated firmware. It allows you to do a warning arc, so you can give the person a visual warning. Also has the ability to recharge the batteries instead of having to purchase new batteries. And there's also better sighting system on it. There's dual lasers on it. Now, to give you a little background on tasers and Exeter PD, give you an idea of how often we use these, it's not often, which is a good thing. In 2019, we had one taser use, and we also track how many times it just comes out of a holster and gets aimed at someone. So it was aimed one time as well in 2019. In 2020, we had one taser use and aimed it twice. In 2021, one taser, and that was aimed at a knife-wielding suspect for three minutes, excuse me, three seconds, and they dropped the knife right away as soon as they saw that the taser was on. So that's the kind of outcome we're looking for. And in 2022, so far, we have had none. So it's not something that we utilize often, which is, again, a good thing, but it's one of those pieces of equipment that when you need to use it, you want to make sure it works. And that's, it really comes down to a potentially life or death situation, not just for the officer, but for the person we're dealing with, because this is in place of lethal force. And it's also, could be for another, a third person that you're protecting from something happening to them. So for us to get 30 under the quote, we'd be looking at $110,664.75. That will include all the tasers, the batteries, the holsters, and the cartridges for a complete changeover.
Thank you, Chief. How many tasers do we have presently?
We have about 27.
27, okay. And you're right, and you cited this in your memo, that this is available for ARPA funding under the guidelines. But Mr. Dean, how were the taser guns paid for previously?
Through the operating budget.
Okay.
And we went in a staggered, we didn't replace them all at once. We went through a staggered process.
Okay.
So.
So do you currently have some that are still under warranty, or are they all?
At the end of this year, they're all, at the original taser purchase in '06, we staggered them. And then in '17, we did a five-year payment plan. So at the end of this year, they'll all be five years or older.
Okay. Ask other members of the Board. I have a couple more questions, but I'd like to hear if any other members.
I do. So I went back to look at, from our meeting on August 8, we had a list of possible ideas. And we don't have any numbers associated with those. And although I completely understand the importance of this, I am leaning toward this being a budget, part of the budget process and not part of the ARPA fund, just because we have some substantial possible things in our pipeline. And budget is pretty good with the Police and Fire Department. We're talking about the second floor office creation of the town office, chairs, upgrades, sweepstakes, parkway turnaround. We are still waiting to hear about that. 10 Hampton Road, Planet Playground purchase, there's a number of things. So, and we have, if this number is still correct, $736,000. So.
Well, I was going to ask, because I'm feeling the same way you are.
Yeah. It's not that I don't support.
Oh, no, no, I want to get this for you, but we have to find, you know, the, Mr. Dean, I'll ask you this. What do we have, I know you, actually Assistant Manager Roy updated us two meetings ago, what's left of the ARPA funding?
And it's the same amount, it's $736,374.
Which we don't have to spend until 2024.
That's right.
So.
And I do want to say that we've encouraged departments to come forward with requests.
Understood, yeah.
That's why you're seeing that tonight, is the Police Department took the initiative and came forward with something that they felt was worthy of committing the ARPA funds to.
Yeah, and I don't mean any disrespect at all to the process. I understand it, but I'm trying to, you know.
Sure.
Use the ARPA funds in the best way possible, knowing you have tasers. And even though their warranty's going to run out, I think it, I'd like to see it as part of the budget process myself.
So we did get a payment plan estimate, in case we do go that route, which is not, no problem at all. But obviously, with approvals that need to be done, it would be split up into five years, $22,132.95 a year for five years.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that number again?
22, 132.95. So absolutely no worries here with whatever you folks choose.
Chief, before you, if we put this in as a line item, will that still give you time, I mean, will you still have tasers that will work through the March election?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Select Woman Cowan and Select Woman Rountreeolof, any comments or questions?
As long as switching it over to the budget doesn't slow down the process of getting them, then that's fine.
Well, I think that we have to have a holistic conversation about ARPA funds. And so it could be that this gets included in our ARPA fund allocation, or it could not and we go the budget route. So I would like to at least have a sense before budget season really starts in earnest, too, about like what our priorities are, what department head priorities, and just like, so we're all thinking this through. And then it could be that we save some ARPA money for next year. But like, what is our plan with this, I guess?
I think, if I may, I agree with everyone that's had the same idea, that at the last meeting, we talked about, Select Woman Belanger gave off a list that isn't even a complete list of what people want. And like, you know, this project wasn't on there. And it's great that the department heads are, you know, coming up with their list of things that we can take advantage of. But I think it really, before the departments start coming to us, it ought to go through the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager to present to us the list that the departments come up with.
No, I agree. Mr. Dean, at your department head staff meeting, have you, any of your staff, I mean, I know you've given the department heads this charge, but have you, have they all brought their ideas to you and to Melissa?
We have not seen the result from different departments as of yet. I know we've been working on the budget, and the budget is, I'm sort of previewing it a little bit here by saying we're up close to 6% in our budget. So we may end up going back to the budget and looking at things in the budget that would be funded by ARPA. But we need to work on that and refine it.
Because, you know, even though we met, we didn't have a formal, you know, let's get together and talk about how we're going to use the funding. But when Melissa gave the update, you know, two meetings ago, you know, we all basically agreed that we wanted the money to be used for projects that are going to be, or initiatives that are going to be longstanding. And I think that, you know, some of them, the IT, you know, infrastructure we needed, and that was a result of, some of it is a result of COVID or just age. But I think, I think I agree with both, with all four Select Women here, that I think that rather than having the department heads come up one at a time, if you can follow up from your department head meeting and have them submit those to you, and we can put that as an agenda item for the Board to just kind of look at, big picture, what are we, because we've only got a little over $700,000 left. That's not much.
Yeah, and that's fine. And we can give them a deadline and ask for submittals by a certain date.
I would think either before, I would think either for the next meeting or the 26, because then we're getting into budget season. You're going to actually be presenting the draft budget on the 26. So I think time is of the essence. And Chief, I have to reiterate that, you know, we want you to have, we want the department to have the equipment you need, but we just have to look at what's the best way to fund it.
I completely understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Okay. Next order of business this evening is the Rose Farm Conservation Deed Easement. Mr. Sharples is here to speak to that. Hi, Dave.
Hello, thank you. I'm pinch hitting for Kristen Murphy on this because she's downstairs in the Sustainability Advisory Committee. If it ended, she was going to come up before it. But hopefully I can present it. If there's any questions she needs to answer, I can go get her. In your packets, you had a conservation, a copy of a conservation deed for 6.31 acres of conservation land that we're asking the Select Board to consider acceptance of. This land was offered as part of an open space development that was approved by the Planning Board. Final plans have been signed. They are out there doing some of the cleanup work that they got approved for, but they have not started the subdivision as of yet. The deed was reviewed by the Conservation Commission at their August 9 meeting, and they voted unanimously to recommend acceptance of the parcel to the Select Board. Subject to legal counsel review, we had the Mitchell Group, Laura Spector Morgan at the Mitchell Group review the deed, and she has reviewed and approved the language in the deed before you. And be happy to answer any questions. And Kristen Murphy's provided a suggested motion in the end of the memo in the event the Board does wish to accept the conservation parcel.
Select Woman Belanger is the rep to the Conservation Commission. Do you have anything to add?
No, Dave is very good at summarizing everything. They were fine with it, other than having the attorney review, and that process happened. So, yes, that's it.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Sharples?
I have a comment that's not necessarily for Mr. Sharples, but this looks like the other conservation deeds that we've done before. It caught my eye, just kind of struck me that I hadn't thought of it before. But in the description of what uses can go on there is, besides recreation, is forestry and agriculture. And everybody's been wanting to do community gardens somewhere, and I was wondering if we have considered conservation lands for those purposes. So this is a question really for Kristen and maybe the Sustainability Committee downstairs. It was, it's interesting wording, so I just thought I'd throw that out there as an idea, that it can be, you know, public agriculture or even private for sale, farmer's market kind of thing. So it might be an opportunity there. And I don't know if the other conservation areas that we have have that same language.
Thank you. It's a good idea. Okay, seeing no other comments or questions, I entertain a motion to accept the conservation deed as presented. Take that back for a minute. I would accept a motion to accept the Rose Farm Conservation Deed as presented and appoint the Chair to sign on behalf of the Select Board.
Zomo, second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Post and passes. Thank you, Mr. Sharples. And you're on for the next agenda item.
Stay right here.
Whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. As most of you are probably aware, I had been exploring townwide rezoning effort with the support of the Planning Board, Housing Advisory Committee, and Master Plan Oversight Committee. And just a kind of a 30,000, 60,000-foot view of it. Kind of when you're planning a community, there are many limiting factors to growth, and they're all related to your capacity, your capacities, and, for example, your sewer capacity, your water capacity, natural resource capacity, like natural resources, how they can absorb the pollutant loading of development and so forth, you know, and providing your water quality and so forth. There's transportation network capacity. Roads can only handle, you know, so much, so much traffic until, those, most of those capacities can be overcome, but they require some significant capital improvement, improvements to them. So kind of the goal is like, see what our existing capacities are, figure that out, see the ability, you know, and I believe we do have some capacity to, you know, sustain some growth, but figure out what those are, and then allow development and concentrate it in areas that not only doesn't exceed our capacity and create, you know, large capital improvement expenditures, but also is a fiscal benefit to the town. It's like, kind of like, looking at it from a land use productivity standpoint. I mean, I'm not a, as I've told Russ before, I'm not a big fan of the, you know, run government like a business, because there's public interest that, you know, kind of goes against a for-profit when you, you know, you have a town of public interest. But when you're talking about land use, you can look at it in that sense, as far as productivity, is like what it gets for the town and what it means, you know, from environmental standpoint, from a particular fiscal standpoint. And without getting into it too deeply, there are certain land use decisions that are much better, in my opinion, for the town, for the taxpayers, to offset some of the costs of these capital improvements that we're seeing in the CIP and the sewer and water and so forth. And basically, it's kind of pushing development where infrastructure exists. So you're not really creating new development, you're just adding more users to share the same system. So more payers into the same system, thereby reducing the cost for all taxpayers. And we're looking at that, I was looking at that, and also housing component to address kind of affordable housing needs and, you know, rentals and sales in Exeter, because there's a definite need in this, in Exeter and our region. Although I believe Exeter, we have a very diverse housing stock and meet our fair share under the workforce housing law. But I, you know, I think the Planning Board, Housing Advisory Committee, everyone I've seen is, you know, pretty forward-thinking to provide, to continue to be a diverse community. So we're going to look at, you know, trying to provide housing opportunities for all residents through this rezoning. I started doing this myself, but I quickly realized it was a pretty large effort to do, particularly on the community engagement and public outreach component, because you really want to have these, you know, public forums with hopefully hundreds of people like the Master Plan, which take a lot of work behind the scenes, a lot of people to show up, like a lot of consultant, you know, to show up, to handle everyone, and, you know, do breakout groups and so forth. So I found an opportunity through Invest New Hampshire a few weeks ago, and I applied for it. And they felt, you know, they felt it was a very strong application. And I got the award letter. When I wrote this, I didn't get the award letter, but I got it this morning. So there's $45,000 to complete the project. The timeline would be to continue what I'm doing with the Horsley Witten Group and continue through the fall with the idea of potentially putting something on. through the fall with the idea of potentially putting something on the March 2023 warrant. So I'm here tonight to ask the Select Board to accept the funding. There is no match, no town match required, and it was a project that was fully supported by the Boards that I mentioned earlier, and I was working on anyway, but I got additional funds to kind of put into high gear, if you will, and have, have some help from some qualified consultants, because the Horsley Witten Group was the one who did our Master Plan as well.
Right, right. Well, first of all, great job and thank you. I mean, this is great. And I entertain any comments or questions from the Board?
Is there a time restriction on when?
Yeah, it's 2024, the end of 2024, I think. I mean, we'll, even if for some reason, the backup plan, I mean, we don't get on the March 2023 warrant, we still have plenty of time to expend the funds to get on the 2024 warrant. Not the goal, but.
Right, and just to, just so we know.
Yep, yep.
Any questions?
So, sorry, I'm too muffled when I'm with us. I'll put it right back on. Housing Advisory Committee is very excited about this. David brought this to our attention quite a while ago. The Housing Advisory Committee, we're data-driven, but we also use our Master Plan, and I'm not going to repeat every, or read out the Master Plan, but I strongly encourage people, if you haven't read it in a while, to please do so. Our growth specifically, page 47, there's, this is part of our Master Plan for housing diversity. Yes, we do have a good eclectic amount of housing here, but we want to keep it that way, I believe. So, and that is clear, we stated in our Master Plan and what the Housing Advisory Committee has been working toward, and I'll, we have a, I'll plug the mapping tour for next Thursday at the end, but I want to take a moment again. I think it's important to recognize our department heads and Mr. Sharples above and beyond, in my opinion, every time. So I want to thank him for all the work and the ideas and the way he tries to educate all of us. It's very important.
I'm not sure if Dave mentioned it too. I would say that we were the first two, Dave. We were one of the first two communities to get funding through the program.
Yeah, I believe we were the first. We were the first to apply. You know, it opened on a Friday night at nine, and I think I got my application in Monday later in the day, so. And I believe Dover, I heard Dover, yeah. So I think we're the first ones to maybe get Investment Reduction Act funding, because this was a quick turnaround. A lot of them haven't even, you know, their, their rules aren't out yet, their applications aren't out yet, they're, they're planning on second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter announcements. So it was exciting to see, because it, it just kind of came out very timely.
I'm very excited about this, because there, every time one or other land use board looks at something in the zoning ordinance, we do find either very out-of-date things or conflicting things, but this concentration on how to make it better for our built environment as far as welcoming people into the community, because we have places for them to go. It's, I'm really excited to see what the results are and where, goes along with your tour, you know, where we can find some more, not infrastructure, but more dense spaces that is the natural way that a town grows. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I think that this is really important to take a look, as we're still a growing community and we still have unmet needs.
And Dave, I think at this point, you can do these grant applications in your sleep. And it would be interesting, Mr. Dean, just in the time that I've been involved in the town government, just how much money and grand money Mr. Sharples has obtained over the years. I think it's, it could be record-breaking.
Yes, yeah, quite a bit.
Thank you again, Dave.
Yeah, I'll tell you, he has a rumor and he's on it. So I'm just saying, very, very grateful, very thankful for the work that he does, that Mr. Sharples does.
So with that, I would entertain a motion that the Select Board accepts the Invest New Hampshire Municipal Planning and Zoning Grant of $45,000 and to further authorize the town manager or his designee to execute any documents and take any and all actions necessary to complete the project within the available funding.
So moved.
Second.
So motion in the second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes our discussion items this evening. That could break a record.
Yeah. I can go back and read the Master Plan if you'd like.
An all-time record or the record with this board?
It could be both, but we still have work to do, so.
Yes.
Second half of our agenda. There are no abatements or credits or exemptions this evening, Selectwoman Gilman, so, nor there are any permits or approvals.
I do, Mr. Chairman, I do, if I could just jump in there. The Board received a supplement to the packet today, I hope, with the Squamscott River Siphons Project. So I was hoping we could just have some discussion about that. Public Works did come back to us with a recommendation, and their recommendation is that the low bidder, which is N. Greenwich and Sons of Salem, Mass., who submitted the low bid of $1.6 million, $27,750, he awarded the bid. I don't know if you're in a position to do that, or you want, you prefer to wait till the next meeting.
I'd like to open it to the Board. I read this, but I'm not sure the rest of the Board is familiar.
I'm trying to right now.
I am fine if that's who they recommend, so totally fine.
Selectwoman Raffiola?
All we said. So I've read it. I mean, if they.
There was due diligence done on this by right here, who's our consulting engineer on the project, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with going forward with this, too.
And the amount, Mr. Dean, is $1,627,790?
$750.
$750.
Right, okay.
Okay, so the Board's comfortable entertaining this this evening?
Uh huh.
If there's no further discussion, then I would entertain a motion to award the bid for the Squamscott River Siphon Project to N. Greenwich and Sons of Salem, Massachusetts, in the amount of $1,627,750.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Chair, could I also have a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the agreements?
Mr. Chair, I would move to authorize the town manager to, what was the word?
Sign the agreements?
To sign any agreements necessary for completing this project, the Squamscott River Siphon Project.
Now all second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We can move right into your, your town manager's report if you would.
Okay, we have been working, as you know, to update our website, and I want to thank Pam McElroy and Bob Glawacki, who have made some great strides on the website. We've been working at the Board Committee and Commission information, and we now think we have, with the exception of maybe two committees, we have staff contacts on the website, so that should be a big help for people that are trying to reach us through, you know, through the committees and that sort of thing. So that is good news. I want to also acknowledge the efforts of Chief Pullan, who was in the loop on a Massachusetts dealer that had 200 police vehicles, so he was able to go down and book two from the prior year and two for this year, in terms of being able to purchase those to upgrade our fleet. So Chief Pullan, Deputy Chief McCain did a great job on that, and thank you for that effort. Also, we, this is sort of, this is a little bit of bad news. Our signed fuel contracts through August 2023, they'll be for one year, and the amount is $3.78 a gallon for diesel and $2.95 for unleaded gasoline. So that's going to hit our budget, and the Board should be aware of that right up front. That's definitely a marked increase from what we've had in the past. We want to thank Rachel Lochner, our deputy tax collector. She resigned just recently, and she has accepted a new position in Rochester, the city of Rochester. She actually lives in Rochester, so it wasn't one of those things where she left for other reasons, but she definitely has done a great job for us, and we will miss her. So we posted the position today, and we're, we're going to start the search for a new deputy tax collector. Budget meetings have been dominating the schedule, so we are continuing to meet this week on budget, and that is going well so far. I did have a meeting with Mr. Tom Monahan today, talking about the development out at Epping Road. There are a couple of things that he is concerned about. One is impact fees. I know he's been to the Planning Board, and he is expected to pay impact fees, and we talked about the idea that they don't actually have to be paid until a CO is issued, and he was, he was happy to hear that. So that, that's going to help in that regard. Also, one of the TIF items that we have on our agenda is widening the road out at Epping Road, so we're going to continue with that, and it should be online in the spring. We're hoping to move forward with that. And I think that's all I had, unless there are questions.
I have several. The interviews that Mr. Glawacki is doing with the Board Chairs, are those, are those being broadcast yet, or is he waiting until they're all complete? Do you know?
I had understood that they would be broadcast, so I will check with him on that.
Okay. And have we heard from Attorney Mitchell on Swayze Park, the warrant article?
Okay. Yes, we have heard from Attorney Mitchell, and I'm going to try to get my paperwork on So I know Attorney Mitchell has had contact with Tom Donovan from the Charitable Trust. He has sent an email to us, which I will send to the Board tomorrow, so you all can see it.
Thank you.
He has offered his thought process. There is a document about parkways in general that Mr. Donovan has given to Attorney Mitchell to review, so he has asked him to look at that. I don't think the process has gone further than that. However, Attorney Mitchell is supposed to write a letter, which is to be done soon, to go to Mr. Donovan to commence the next step in the process.
Okay. I think maybe, you know, we will appreciate the email, but if Attorney Mitchell could get something for the Select Board to discuss it, I mean, we had a warrant article pass in March, and I know folks are asking, and I understand that it's going to go through the legal process, and that could be time-consuming, but it's, it's the end, what's September?
Yes.
Right, yeah.
I think we'd like to have a formal update.
Yeah, understood.
Has, and then the DPW Director, has that job been posted?
So the Assistant Town Manager and I were working on that today to finalize the outreach packet to look for a new DPW Director, so that is done.
Okay. So with the tax collector, what's the, what's the interim plan until we find somebody? I'm assuming she gave notice?
Yeah, she did give a notice, and her last day is September 23rd, and in the meantime, we're going to work at looking at a temp agency to help us out with that, and also talk to the current collection specialist about her. Maybe she's interested in the position.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, I have three more. The public comment we had several meetings ago about the water and sewer billing, you were going to look into the process, the software, and the wording of our policy.
Right, for that, we are going to have to look at the program itself.
Okay.
To look at making some changes to the program to calculate interest on a daily basis instead of on a monthly basis.
Can we get an update on the, because we told the gentleman that we'd have an update for him, so if we could have that for the next meeting. And then I had the opportunity to walk downtown last week with Congressman Pappas, who was visiting Exeter to visit some of the small businesses, and of course, you know, we had met with him back in 2021, when he looked at the siphon project and approved congressional spending, and he was, he was asking how it was going, and it prompted me to ask you for an update on the project.
So, and just as you awarded the bid just a few minutes ago, we should have a more detailed update for you at your next meeting.
Okay. All right. Sorry, that's a lot for the next meeting, but it's, I'd like to get this all cleaned up before budget.
Fair enough.
And we'll look for the Department Head, ARPA, suggestions as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Select Board Committee reports, Selectwoman Belanger?
I had a Planning Board meeting on August 25th. I am not going to say the name of this company properly, I apologize. Larps, they're this incredible sneaker, and we had a show and tell at the meeting, it was pretty incredible. Product, I can't remember if their product comes from Norway, or they're based out of Norway, but they want to build a facility out on Epping Road. Pretty exciting, and they'll be back in front of the Planning Board this Thursday, so if anybody is interested in following along. Brentwood Distribution asked for an expansion, expansion on a laydown area. It borders Brentwood and Exeter, so Exeter approved that. It's just an area for them to source some of their product through the winter. And then we had a few requests for extension for approval of a subdivision on Watson Road. One Home Builders was another one, and one is Mr. Carlisle of Altucher, who did with that issue, so, and those were all granted. Shall I talk about the Housing Advisory Committee now?
Sure.
Okay, so that meeting is this, so we have a Planning Board meeting Thursday night, Housing Advisory Committee meeting Friday morning. The Exeter walking tour is a week from Thursday, from 4:00 to 6:00, with some after-hours at Sea Dog. There is a link on the town webpage, thank you, Mr. Glawacki and team. I'm going to ask him to post the walking tour map for anybody who might want to follow along and get there late, they could join. So there is an RSVP link, and that is, so we know kind of how many people are coming, but also so we can give Sea Dog a heads up on how many people might be walking through their door at 6:00 or 6:50. It starts at the Town Hall. Rockham Planning Commission, New Hampshire Planners Association, and Workforce Housing Coalition, they've all done an incredible job putting this tour together and getting sponsors for this. But again, it's called Housing, Hiding in Plain Sight. And, you know, we drive, even when we walk, we don't always look in people's yards, and it really is helpful to see what we have, the diversity. So I hope people can join us. It's going to be exciting and part of our education and moving forward the next steps. So, thank you.
Thank you. Selectwoman Gilman?
I had no committee meetings, but I do have a couple of actions, I guess. One is not for any of our committees, but perhaps for our town manager and department heads. I'm sure they already got the notice about the state's municipal surplus auction, and so if we have any, and they take more than vehicles, they take any kind of equipment that we might be looking to replace or have, you know, more of, but every once in a while we hear somebody wants to sell some things, we have to declare it as surplus material, and the state will take any municipality's things and auction it off for us. And they claim, anyway, that it's more, we would get more monetary value going through this process than just doing it ourselves. And the other thing is, after conversations with the Heritage Commission and the Arts Committee about making improvements to the Town Hall, I'm starting the process of getting the Town Hall registered on the National Register of Historic Places. the Town Hall registered on the National Register of Historic Places, because that will open us up to federal grant opportunities for both preservation and for reuse. So I'm meeting with the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance, is going to come toward the building either the 12th or the 14th, and that's the first step. They will provide the, the grant for up to $4,500 with no match.
Thank you very much. Selectwoman Cowan?
I don't have any update.
Okay. Selectwoman Ratriola?
I was gone, so nothing to report.
I actually, I pinch-hit on the Swayze Park trustees meeting, and they discussed increased signage for no dogs in the, in the parkway, and they were coming up with some new creative signs rather than the, the typical no dogs allowed, and actually suggested maybe signage more at eye level, so it catches folks' attention. Or, you know, when you're walking, I don't have a dog, but I've seen people, they're, they're looking down, so maybe having some, getting creative, they were going to touch base with DPW. They also talked about their fall and spring plans for seeding and for work they were going to do, and because of the drought and the water restrictions, they've decided that they're putting everything on hold for now, naturally, because of the water restrictions. So that's all I had. Sustainability's meeting downstairs as we speak, so I'll get an update for all of you at the next meeting. Reviewing the board calendar, Mr. Dean, I got creative a little bit through October, and I'm going to ask for your help on this, to make sure I got dates correct with holidays and everything coming up. We are scheduled to meet again on the 19th and then the 26th, which is back-to-back. The 26th being because Mr. Dean will present the draft budget to the Select Board before it goes to the Budget Recommendations Committee on the 28th. And then, Mr. Dean, there's a holiday the week of the 10th, but I was wondering if we could meet on the 11th, which would set us up to go back to every other week, if I read the calendar correctly.
Right, so we'll have to make some adjustments to other committees, but I think we can...
I think that would work best.
...have room for, for the Select Board.
Because we'll have the 19, 26, skip a week, we go back on, you know, irregularly every other week, would be the 11th, and then back on the 24th. That sets us up for November. I was just looking at the holidays in advance. Are there any objections from the board on those dates?
Can you say those dates one more time?
Sure.
I'm going to put them in.
We have September 19th, September 26th, and then October 11th and October 24th.
October...
So Tuesday.
Because Monday's a holiday, yeah.
Yep. So I can tell you that Conservation Commission meets on the 11th.
Right.
Okay.
And we've tried to address that with CONCON before. We've just moved the rooms around for them.
Okay.
Right.
Which means I'll have to miss two meetings in a row, too. Not, they're, Kristen has been very good, because they're going to have their meeting Tuesday night during voting.
Right.
But I've had to miss another meeting before, and she just, she gives me a memo, and I can watch it, so.
So worst-case scenario, Mr. Dean, could we, I mean, we could use the Town Hall, correct?
Worst-case scenario, we could.
I mean, it should be cool enough, then?
I, I would think so.
And not too cold?
Hopefully.
Fingers crossed. So why don't we tentatively plan on that unless you find something that...
Okay. We'll do that. Thank you.
If nobody has anything else, I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A 32D.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, and seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Ratriola?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Madam Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye, it's unanimous. The board will be moving into non-public.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.